I will call this meeting to order. It is 6:32 and it is October the 5th. And this is the City of Martindale Regular City Council Meeting. The roll call, Mayor Protan Villalobos. Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Shell Allen is online.
Here.
Councilmember McClaff.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Glaze. And if you all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And if you would remain standing for the invocation. Dear heavenly Father, gracious Lord, we just are so grateful to be living in Martindale. And Lord God, we just praise you for our little town and all of the blessings that you have given to us here. Lord God, we just ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we go forth this evening and do the business of Martindale. And we just ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Okay. Are there any public comments?
None.
Okay, no public comments. Um, so I don't, I have a few things that I'd like to comment on. There has been two permits, I think several of you probably know from last week, the Red Barn Bakery is now in business. My husband had Sunday lunch there. She serves pot roast on Sunday. So she's decided that she'll do like one plate every day. And it'll be a different entree, but on Sundays it will always be pot roast. And it was delicious. And on the Prickly Plant Motel is up and going. And so we're really excited to have her.
Where is that?
Across the street in between the grocery store and Max's, Max's House. She's got like a little, it's not a hotel, it's a plant. Called Prickly Plant Hotel. Or Motel, yeah.
For the plant.
A plants and gifts is what she said. So in doing some of these ordinances, what we've discovered is in the future, we're going to have to come up with an ordinance that deals with like farmer's market kind of things. If we want to, you know, regulate that kind of thing. Like on the Fourth of July, we have booths over here and we do charge for the booths. And now we're having the Sunday thing that Sonia's doing. And I was called about doing a few permits, but we're not going to do any permits for them right now because there isn't a clear definition about how to do a permit for something that's just a, like a farmer market kind of thing.
Right, if it is on city property, I think it might make a difference.
Well, even that's not on city property.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's kind of what personally we're.
It's something to work out.
Yeah.
Um, the police, we didn't get this on the agenda because we didn't think we needed to. But the police are going to have to have some new computers. We need to upgrade them to Windows 10. And so I just wanted to let you know that because we're probably going to be authorizing one or two computers in the next few days to get things up and running properly. We're, we're not going to have time to ask to spend that money. But according to the, the policy, we can spend, Jared can spend up to $3,000. So if we have, we just, our IT people have said there, we're going to have to have new computers. The police have spent an enormous amount of time trying to get things up and running in the last few days. And so we're just going to have to make that purchase.
And I would suggest getting all in ones. So it doesn't take up so much space. Because they have the big desktops, right?
Not in the car.
Yeah, and the, these are the tough book.
For the car.
These are like the Pixar tough book.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about the computers.
And they, that they get mounted in the cars for their patrols and things. And so, in order to run the software that does the ticket writing and report generating and some of those things, they need to be upgraded. Just obsolete.
Yeah. Okay, and now I'll hand that over to Jared.
We'll listen, share screens and. All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight, I want to focus on just one topic. There's some other things that have been going on, but interested time and what's really critical. I want to be able to focus some information on the water, a water treatment plant application that the city has received. This is related to the municipal utility district that was created out of the Walton Cotton Center Development that the city entered into a development agreement back in 2013. It was modified, I believe, in 2018. They were able to create a separate treatment plant for that development area, separate from the city's wastewater system. As part of that, they've gone forward over the years and developed an application for this treatment plant with design specifications. And they initially had a draft that was submitted to TCEQ back in January. The city reviewed it, it was available for a short period of time for public review. We noticed in that initial draft application that some of their proposed metrics for what the discharge of the treated wastewater was going to be. And we didn't, we thought those, that criteria was not stringent enough. We reached out to a representative of that developer and they said, oh, no, no, well, that's a mistake, that's, this is just an early draft. We'll make the update, our engineers will make the update when we actually submit the full application. Well, they submitted the full application, received that application just last week. It is available for public review at, here at City Hall. So if anybody's interested, they can come down, take a look at it. The, the main feature that I want to focus on is what the treated, discharged treated water, wastewater will be. So the Mar, the San Marcos River Foundation has put out, at least with the city of San Marcos, when they're negotiating with that discharge criteria was going to be, was a frequently referred to as a 5-5-2-1. That's five milligrams per liter of biochemical oxygen demand, five milliliters, milligrams per liter of suspended solids, two milligrams per liter of ammonia nitrogen, and one milligram per liter of phosphorus. Now, later tonight, we'll have opportunity to hear a report from the river advisory board. They'll, they'll be able to tell you what that means, how it impacts the river. Basic standpoint is, that's, that's a pretty good standard to have. The river advisory board has been meeting, like we'll have a recommendation to city council, propose a resolution or something. We'll let Joy kind of talk about that when it comes up. I'm sorry, there's a note on the screen. City Ministry can authorize 3K, that was before.
Okay.
And that the mayor can do, so you got 4,000.
Well, yeah, we can, we'll look at what we can do.
And that's from the other subject, so.
So, so we'll keep on, we'll keep on this one. The, the application that we received at City Hall does not meet that 5-5-2-1 standard that the developer previously indicated that they would meet. Instead, their, their treatment system over the course of three phases, as they bring more residential units online and things, has different criteria that, that flushes. Initial phase, it's instead of five milligrams per liter of biochemical oxygen demand, it's doubled that, it's 10, 10 milligrams per liter. Instead of, so the five milligrams per liter of total suspended solids, it's 15, three times the, the standard. For the ammonia nitrogen, instead of two milligrams per liter, it's three. So it's at a higher level in that initial phase. And then phosphorus doesn't seem to be, is not really mentioned. It just says, they'll report on it. So I'm not sure if they're really setting any higher criteria. I bring this up because it's been an interest, councils in the past, been an interest of members in our community that we want to have a pretty stringent discharge criteria for, for the city. Where this, where this is going to be located is somewhere within this blue outlined area. This is the property that would have the treatment plant. There is, that is discharged to Hemp Hill Creek, which eventually flows into Morrison Creek, which flows into the San Marcos River, highlighted here roughly in yellow. So somewhere in, in this area, there'll be a wastewater treatment plant. That water will be discharged into that creek, flow down until it meets Morrison Creek, and then down to the, the river. Another note, I, the opportunity to discuss this briefly with the general manager of the Martindale Water Supply Corporation, Stephen Falville. And he mentioned to me that they, they have some wells out in that area.
Yep.
And there's, there's a real concern that they have that this could possibly, you know, influence or impact their wells.
Yellow wells.
So, um, this is a, this is a significant concern. There's 30 days for the, for there to be public comments sent into the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality with any protest, if you will. And I, I believe the city should look at doing that. And we'll have something drafted or presented for, for your review at likely our next meeting. That'll still be within the time period. So, wanted to bring people's awareness to it. If you have questions, I'll try to answer them. I don't know the best about it, but hopefully.
I want to make a few comments.
Are we going to be talking about this later?
Not tonight. I want to give this as part of my administrator's report at first, and then we'll cover it again. The Joy Youngers, who's able to join us, she might have some additional comments on this. They're in her river advisory report.
Uh, okay.
I'll make a few comments, or let her speak first.
Oh, we, you go ahead. If you have, if you have a question.
First of all, you know, I've had discussions with Walton Group before. It was verbally. And they said verbally that they would do, agree to a 5-5-2-1. And we do have an email chain that they did say they would do a 5-5-2-1. So to me, it's a classic bait and switch. What concerns me also, there's nothing about phosphorus. And that is the toughest one to control. That's why Sam Marcus went, they went to a more stringent to, instead of a 5-5-2, a 5-5-2-1, they went to a 5-5-2.5 because phosphorus makes the clarity of the water is a real problem. So I think it's disingenuous of Walton Group saying one thing and, and doing another. Do, do, so, I mean, I guess I'm in agreement with you. We probably discuss it and definitely we, I think we would be a, a party if it went to a contested case. Because is it part of this at our city limits? Part of this?
The, the, the creek definitely crosses into our city limits. The location of the treatment plant itself is with, is not. But it, I'd have to look, I don't have the exact coordinates of where this is going to be, but it's possibly even within our ETJ.
And I'm not, I'm not an, I'm not an attorney, but I definitely think that we, we, we could be a party in a contested case since this is a city and we, it is going to be in our city limits and ETJ. As we all aware, TC, I guess Joy can explain this, but TCEQ is pretty lenient on these discharges, but we, we definitely need to be a party.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll have that prepared with, for city council at the next meeting.
Something we might need to do a regulation or ordinance with?
I recommend at the minimum, we look at doing a resolution.
We've got a resolution from Mayor Devaney in 2019.
Yeah, but on, on the, on the, okay, yeah, so this has the 5-5-2-1. That was adopted in September 2019. Resolution 2019-09-10-01. That, that would be good, that would be good background, but we might have, might want to also have a resolution specific to this permit application.
Okay.
And it's that one more thing to it. It's the 5-5-2-2.5, change it. Go to a point five if we're going to change that resolution to fall in line with, with other developments. Because the phosphorus is such a, really a difficult problem.
Okay, go ahead, I'll let, I'll, I'll be quiet. That's, that's the end of my administrator's report.
Okay.
Chief Warren is not here. He was on his way here and he got rear-ended. So he's not able to be here. We were hoping to be able to ask him questions and stuff, but. And then Judge Fusco's is not here. He sent an email that he will report in two weeks. So since we were talking about this issue with the, with this water issue, can we just go ahead and skip to, oh, I guess we've got the historic parks and. Plenty of zoning, oh, can we just?
It's written accounts payable on here.
Well, they're on, they're after the board.
Oh, no, the, the, the financial report tonight, we're still wrapping up the, end of fiscal year. So what we want to do is present that once the fiscal year is wrapped up and completed. Call the accountants, we'll present it next, next week.
Next week.
Next meeting, not, not next week.
So since we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant, is it all right if we just go down to the San Marcos River Board right now? Is that all right with everyone? Okay, so Joy, are you?
Yes, I'm here. And I had an opportunity to review the Walton, Texas TCEQ permit application. I know that Jared already went through this, but very briefly, they're specifying up to 420,000 gallons per day at final phase with an affluent, with these levels, 10 milligrams per liter biochemical oxygen demand, 15 milligrams per liter of total suspended solids, three milligrams per milliliter of ammonia nitrogen, and 126 colony forming units of E. coli, which will flow into the Hemp Hill Creek, then onto Morrison Creek, and then onto the San Marcos River, just southeast of Martindale. I have not had an opportunity to discuss the application with my fellow river advisory committee members. However, I, I will note what the mayor just mentioned, and that is that the City of Martindale did pass a resolution in Jul, I think it's July of 2019, whereby any water, any wastewater treatment plant that discharged into a tributary of the San Marcos River would adhere or observe limits of 5-5-2-1. And then, this past July, the Martindale River Advisory Committee recommended that the city beef up these limits to the same as San Marcos, where those limits were 5-5-2-0.5. Just real briefly, the consequences of, of these elevated affluent limits are far reaching. The greater the biochemical oxygen demand, the more rapidly oxygen is depleted in stream. This means less oxygen is available to higher forms of aquatic life. The higher concentrations of suspended solids, of course, will increase the turbidity of the water, making it cloudier, making it absorb more heat, harming water life that way. In addition, they deplete, the photo, they decrease the photosynthesis for the native aquatic plants, thereby decreasing the oxygen available to aquatic life. And not to mention, the higher levels of, the higher levels of suspended solids could mean increased bacteria, increased pesticides, heavy metals, salts, et cetera, which have their own impacts on aquatic life. The ammonia pollution is harmful to plants, aquatic plants and aquatic animals for obvious reasons. And phosphorus, although this is, again, not mentioned in the, in the permit application, phosphorus affluent levels, they could, phosphorus can be thought of as algae food. Increased phosphorus levels lead to very dangerous algae blooms, which I don't know if you've recently heard of dogs being harmed in the Austin Lakes from algae blooms. Steve Fonville has forwarded to me a map of the wellhead protection areas. And that is the area that must be protected to avoid any groundwater degradation to the existing Martin Dale Water Supply Corporation wells. I want to note that the San Marcos River Foundation is actually actively working with Senator Zaffarini to officially request a public meeting with the Walton Group. They are in final stages and getting legal to review their requests. The first, next step will be requesting a public meeting. And I think that's where the City of San Marcos comes in. And any members of the public will need to submit their public comments. And each and every one of them are important. 30 days after public, public publication of the notice from the Walton Group of this permit application is the limit, is the deadline for us to submit, or anybody to submit public comments. So I called the chief clerk with the Texas, with the TCEQ. They are not in receipt yet of proof of publication. So I'm not sure if it's been publicized or not. I do know that I contacted Lockhart Register and they have not gotten back to me with confirmation, one way or the other. And I have a feeling that it has not been done yet because somebody would have seen it.
Will that push back the deadline?
That would push back our deadline, yes, that would give us more time.
When, when was that deadline? I didn't quite get it.
Our deadline for public comment or to request a public meeting is 30 days after they publish, they publish notice. And I'm assuming that would be in the Lockhart Register.
It could also be under the San Marcos newspaper because that is also an approved newspaper circulation of the city.
So nobody's seen anything yet?
I have not, no.
Would they have it posted on their website?
And would that be counted?
I don't know.
I'm almost certain one of us would have heard of it.
To Lisa's question was, was, what was passed in July 2019? A resolution or ordinance? It was a resolution and is actually done in September.
Yes.
September 2019. May have been discussed in July, but it was passed in September.
It is on our website.
Is everybody here aware of the original agreement that we had with Walton? As far as, instead of them building their own wastewater treatment plant, that they would use monies to help us beef up ours so that they could, it would accommodate it. But we changed that because I think our wastewater people, wastewater. Those people advised us that there wouldn't be enough, we wouldn't be able to have enough.
Capacity.
Capacity. But I'm not sure about that. I, I, you know, I kind of think we were given incorrect information. And we just messed up on that. But if we could somehow renegotiate, at least maybe part of it, whatever's in our ETJ, in our ETJ are in our city limits, maybe we can put, have them hook up to our sewage plant so that not so much is going into Morrison Creek. I don't know, it's just something to think about.
I think we can include that as part of the discussion for, for the future agenda item.
Does it say in their phase one, two, and three, how many homes are in each phase?
I, I haven't.
They haven't gotten that far.
I don't know if they've gotten that far. They, they just have the gallons per day that Ms. Youngers referenced.
I think we discussed possibly doing it in the past. I mean, Lisa probably done more than me, but we have, this has been going on for 10, over 10 years about doing a partnership using our facility and then eventually upgrading it. And like I say, I guess we don't even know it's going to be a package plant, regional plant. It's just a permit only going to the TCEQ. This is our first step.
Based on the size, I would assume that this is just a package plant for that development area.
Probably so.
As I understand it, that full development includes two mud districts. I'm not sure if both mud districts have their own package answer what the situation is there, but we can always invite the representative of that developer.
I would love for him to come here, especially, I would love them to come here and discuss this with us again.
Good, okay.
So Lisa says it was our permit that did not have enough capacity, not literally.
Yeah, so what that's referring, referring to is our wastewater treatment plant permit is authorized to do so many gallons of irrigation per day. However, that may, you could probably fill the ponds up more than, than just that. So it's a very, the, the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant is, does not seem to be a defined science. It's hard to get an exact number because we would have, well, we can discuss it later tonight on infrastructure.
Yes.
ARPA stuff.
But it's obvious by this, this location, they're not going to use, they're going to have their own separate plant.
That's correct.
That's fine, okay, okay.
We agreed to that.
No, I mean, we, we, one time we talked about doing a partnership and using our, our current wastewater plant as our site. But now they've got a totally different site.
Any other questions for, for Joy?
No, that's it. Any, any other question?
Joy, I have a question just real quick. What about the two developments on the Guadalupe side? The Mayan and the other one? I know one of them was going to hook up to San Marcos Sewer. Is there any updates on those other developments on the other side?
I think they are actually both going to hook up with the San Marcos Treatment Plant now.
Oh, HK is, okay.
I think so.
Good news.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joy.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Craig Foster on Zoom? For the Historic Commission report?
His name's not listed on the, on here, unless he's one of the people who dialed in.
How would we know?
I think we can assume not.
Okay. And Parks?
I actually did speak to Susan and she wasn't prepared to come tonight. And this is actually her, would be her first meeting since she was elected chairperson of the Parks Advisory Committee. So I'll just mention a few things if that's fine.
Yeah.
First, I'm going to mention the things that have been done in the past month. A water faucet has been installed at Guardiola Park to the water meter that is just, that we approved. So we have a faucet there now. We also have a three-month credit on the water bill due to the monies that were saved. Also, I did plant a five-gallon oak tree, a five-gallon cock-sized oak tree in the park, Guardiola. Guardiola Park, where the cottonwood tree was that died. Sean McDonald and myself did remove the two benches that were there, rickety old wooden benches that would give you possibly slippers, flinters if you sat on them. So I would like to reach out. Maybe someone has some concrete benches, garden benches, maybe that they aren't using those those would work great there. On one of the bench, there was a plaque for Mr. Crabtree that Susan Snirk created that plaque. And so I have removed that plaque and saved it. Allen Bates Park thanked the City Council for approving the removal of four hazardous trees. It was done promptly the very next day after the meeting. Very good work done. The stumps have been ground out all the way to the ground. I yesterday planted a five gallon red maple tree in Allen Bates Park where the red bud tree was that died. So if anyone likes to go check that out, it looks very good there right next to the Walker concrete slab. Phase one, we're getting some bids for phase one, possibly to grade the road or create a parking space and then put some road base down. I have got three bids currently. And so that's something that I think would be something that would be.
Can you send the other two to me? I have one.
Okay, see the other two. One, okay, so that's exciting because the it'll it'll improve the going in and out of the park. And we'll have a designated small parking space there, parking place. Briefly, crazy ants have taken over our parks. Crazy tawny ants. These are not like the raspberry ants, but these are called crazy ants. I recently had the Caldwell County Ag Extension Agent come to my property on the river and take some samples. He verified that they are crazy ants. Crazy ants move around frantically. They don't go in a straight, straight line. Couple other people in Bella Vista have the crazy ants. I did find out that you can get this product called Thermador to treat it. It's a termite based product.
Are they in the park?
They are in phase one. They're now going to the water. There they there droves of them going towards the water. They're attracted to electrical systems. So you need to be cautious that they're not getting into your electrical appliances that you might have or plugs outside. These crazy ants are attracted to that. So let's see, then that I think that's about it. Phase one. We do want to do some things in the future with Allen Bates Park. We want to put some more fall protection mulch down in the swing set area and the playground. The last time we did it, it was $3,000. So it could possibly be that much. We also need to improve the gravel walkways to the river. It's it's almost like a ravine. And so we need to work on that. We need to fix the electrical plugs, the lights and the and the switches at Allen Bates Park and plant three new trees. Mr. Galloway that owns the property downstream from Allen Bates Park has been getting his property property survey. He wants to put limestone blocks on his property line to prevent people from driving from Allen Bates Parking Lot across into his property. So that's something that is going to be on the horizon for the Galloway property adjacent to Allen Bates Park.
And those big blocks are okay?
Yes, they are okay in the floodway. They are used a lot in San Marcos and in other river communities. So Mr. Galloway also wants to put a gate on the front of his property. And he did get the survey done to show how long the distance is from the middle of nineteen seventy nine to where his property starts, and it's probably fifty feet. There is a sixty foot easement of nineteen seventy nine closer to the nineteen seventy nine bridge. But as you come up to the curb to Allen Bates Park and Fannin Street, the easement goes down to fifty feet. So that's something in the future. Also, some fencing has been put up upstream from Allen Bates Park on what's called the Arlene Lane property. And we're doing some discussions about that. But it apparently is all good because the permit has been received. And that's all I got. Thank you.
So Mr. Calloway inherited this piece of property from his brother. And it was if you look on the CAD, it says Little River something. And so it's a piece of property that separates Allen Bates Park from.
Phase three.
Phase three.
The Guadalupe gravel pit, Guadalupe County gravel pit.
Yeah. So it was a piece that we would like to buy someday if it ever becomes available. I did want to add to your report that Adrian has done two workshops. And he's done an excellent job and gotten a lot of valuable information towards what the public wants.
And and there's a Spanish language workshop this weekend.
Mike, do you have any updates on any river property updates or anything?
What about in there a survey on our a survey online?
Yes, there is. There is. There is a survey online.
Everybody's input.
Well, everybody's input, respond to the survey. If you don't, the link is available, should be in your mailer. We also have it here downtown in City Hall. And you may find some QR codes that you can click on, you know, take a picture of on your phone. It'll take you to the link as well.
Somebody said something about the ants up there?
Lisa. Lisa has two comments.
Okay, huge problem in Wimberley. How do you give us more information on workshops? We had a workshop on Saturday, two weeks ago. Eight of us showed up. City leaders here, city leaders, members of the River Committee, members of the mayor and spouse.
Joy.
Joy and the City Council, myself. Susan Shune showed up, the Chairman of the Parks Advisory Committee. We went over aerial photographs of all the parks that were done with it with a drone. And so we broke down our comments to every park. And then we took meticulous notes and then reported on our notes and then gave our notes to Adrian. So we received a lot of input and, oh, Carol Devaney was there as well and expressed a lot of concern about ADA compliant pathways, playgrounds, swings. There is some more research we need to do about impervious ground cover in the floodway. And so that's something that we need to figure more about about how that impacts the trail system, which we eventually would like to create in the different phases of the park.
We haven't are you going to have our engineering company do some kind of a draw?
So, yeah, so the thought is we take the input from the outreach, the surveys, the workshops and and get some feedback on what what amenities residents would like. Where what what are their desires for the park system in general? And then at that point, bring on possibly the engineering firm or a landscape architecture firm to put that in pictures. And say, all right, here's here's the idea. Here's the sort of things that came out of a survey workshop period. Help us realize that vision on what that could look out like as far as a lay down of.
And so again, the next workshop is this weekend, the Spanish.
Yeah.
So Joe, come to the workshop this weekend. On Saturday at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
And bring a bunch of people down. Tell us what you want done in the parks. Yeah.
Yeah, I know some people are interested.
Yeah.
I'll get the I'll talk to them and think if I can persuade them, you know.
Yes.
Maybe a snack or something.
Yeah. Adrian had snacks for us.
You need to put outside free breakfast.
Yeah.
Ten o'clock.
We will see. Set the setup out here on the street.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. So planning and zoning, do you have anything?
Nothing update.
So we'll move on to item number six, consent items. And accounts payable and the minutes. We've got a lot of minutes.
We're not doing accounts payable, right?
Yeah. Just the minutes.
There's four sets of minutes. And since there's so many, if you wanted to take time to read them and and do them next in two weeks, that's probably okay.
I'm going to say I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to table the acceptance of the minutes just so we have time to look over them to be presented at the next City Council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion to table the minutes and and tell the next meeting in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Oh, are there any nays?
Yeah, Lisa's Lisa type it in. There, nay.
A or nay?
Unanimous.
Okay, unanimous.
So the minutes are compiled by recordings or by written?
Recordings.
Recording. Okay, yes, I I compliment you on the.
Yes.
We'd like to read them before.
And getting the whole month of September done. That's awesome.
Yeah, very quiet week. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number seven, A. Approving the Chief of Police Job Description and Recruitment Brochure.
Yeah, I didn't feel the need to print up print this off again, same as as what we've looked at at a previous meeting about two weeks ago. The main the I did want to take it back to City Council because it would change what you previously approved. And I just want to make sure that we're okay with that. What we're looking at doing is making the requirement for a bachelor's degree optional or preferred based on the recommendation of our new interim Chief of Police Tommy Ward. His recommendation is that we make that a preferred option. And one of the driving factors of requiring that from my standpoint is that that position of the Chief of Police has a lot of writing involved, especially grant writing. Bachelor's degree, often you you have some practice and efficiency proficiency in writing. And in lieu of requiring that bachelor's degree, if we make it just a preferred item, him and I talked and discussed, including in our review of applicants, either as part of the application package or later on, once we get to finalists, requiring a writing sample on what's your leadership philosophy? What is your philosophy and approach to community based policing? And that way we get some writing samples from from the candidates that that would address kind of that.
Sometimes associate degree in some college usually is.
Yeah, or people might have other have other professional experience that expose them to writing and they might be.
They've got tons of experience. I'm sure they're probably.
The the other thing that was recommended was going from a four years of supervisory experience requirement to five, so increasing that by year. And then the other as a requirement. Again, when you're doing that, you're making you know, I think that there's a little bit of a trade there. If you're not going to require the degree, maybe an extra year of experience of supervisor experience would be useful.
Where is that written at?
It's I'm sorry.
Read the second sentence there.
Oh, okay, okay. Four years.
The.
Going to change it to five.
Yeah, we'll change that to five. And the other change is that we'll look to do is make sure that we we had a comment from the T. Cole Regional Representative that in our job description posting, we make sure we highlight the T. Cole certification requirement. It was on our brochure, but not on the other documents. So we just want to make sure that we cover our bases on that they have certification from T. Cole. So those are the three items. They're not reflected here. But that but we want to change. And so there's what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the changes as presented. And we'll make sure we get this posted. There's my discussion.
We weren't going to worry about, I know we mentioned about living within a certain radius, but we weren't going to put that in there or worry about it.
Not not as a qualification standard at this point.
I want to go ahead and make a motion to accept the changes as presented.
All right, I'll second.
Does that include going forward with the brochure?
Yeah, 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 that covers that.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the brochure to hire Chief of Police. And a second, is there any more discussion?
Zoom chat up.
They're minor, but significant.
Yeah, very significant. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Okay, the motion carries.
You just wrote in aye as well.
And it's unanimous.
All right.
Good job.
So that that was a that's a quick item. We'll get into this next agenda items. We'll have a little more discussion on it.
Yes.
Hold that up.
There's a handout on that, too.
All right. So this agenda item is, as it stated on the agenda, the use and allocation of the fiscal year twenty one budget surplus, long term capital improvement funds, American Recovery Plan Act funding, and other cash on hand not included in the fiscal year twenty two budget for wastewater water wastewater infrastructure, road reconstruction, res servicing, cleaning Lockhart Street, Nettles Street, and other city streets, completing purchase or lease of patrol car contracted with public already public safety in December fifteenth, twenty twenty, and other potential uses. Summary, off budget spend plans. So our fiscal year twenty two budget that we just approved laid out a number of spending categories and items that are included in the budget. Things that were not included in the budget were long term capital improvement spending, cash on hand spending from previous budget surpluses and the American Recovery Plan Act funding. Those are all covered in the Community Development Fund, Long Term Capital Improvement Plan Savings Account and other unrestricted funds. So the intent of this conversation tonight is to decide what we want to do with the police patrol car and decide where we want to focus our efforts on the American Recovery Plan Act funding. How that interplays with the Long Term Capital Improvement Fund because it's all related is why we're discussing it. So real quick, this is where our bank statement balances are. This is kind of the the money that we get to talk about. So in unrestricted funds, this is the general fund bank balance and general fund overflow. Those the total general fund cash on hand is $178,000. The total amount in the long term capital improvement fund savings account central savings account is $144,000.
Those are the current balances now?
Those are the current balances now.
With the first.
As of today, the you'll. As of today, the, you'll notice that in the Community Development Funds, we have, we've received the ARPA grant, the American Recovery Plan and Act grant, the first of two annual payments of $152,000. The second payment listed there in italics, we won't receive that until later in the year in two thousand twenty-two. So probably August, September, about the same time that we received this last one. However, when we're looking ahead to what our planning is, I think it's important to consider the total bucket of money.
Correct.
Just over $300,000. So, want to, we'll start with the unrestricted funds, that general. This, this available balance represents, this available balance of 178,000 represents our operating cash flow reserves. So what, what that means is, in order, especially in the first two months of the fiscal year, we typically do not have the revenues coming in purely under the budget to cover those expenses. We will run at a small deficit. I think last, last year through October and November, we were at a budget deficit of like $9,000 or somewhere in that range. By December, we started getting our property tax revenues and things, and then from there, we're, we can go with within that budget. A general rule of thumb is to maintain a, about a three-month cash on hand reserve in case something happens and your revenue stops flowing in for whatever reason. So it's not exact, but based off last year's historical data, a three-month reserve would be about $134,000, $135,000. A four-month reserve, which was October, November, December, January, would be about $170,000. Now, that is adjusted down from the total outlays that we have in our general fund. So when we pay our bills, almost all the bills come out of our general fund on the utility count, yes. Sorry.
Share your screen, please.
Oh, I am so sorry. Here we go. So I'm gonna back up real quick because people were not able to see that, you were not able to see that. This was the select bank statement balances, unrestricted funds, general flow, or general fund. 178,000, Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund, 144,000. And then the total planned amount that we expect to receive from the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA, is $305,000. We've received 152 of that to date.
And, and is that 152 included in either one of those balances?
No, these are all separate and distinct. So all total, we're looking at, I don't know, math and math on the spot and in public is always a difficult thing, but somewhere around $600,000 to work with here.
And we haven't made the first payment on the police car yet?
Yeah, we'll get to that in a second. So on on our cash on hand, this, my, my recommendation is to proceed with a four-month cash on hand operating reserve, alternative to. But what that does is it limits in some respects, using that money for other things that we're going to talk about later on. But I think it's a good planning factor going forward because there might be some unknowns that the city could face in the future.
So it's just padding in the checking account in case there's an emergency or.
It's not, it's, it's sep, this is separate from the emergency fund.
Right, right.
It is a cash flow reserve, operating cash flow reserve. So checks are coming in, checks are going out, it's making sure we don't bounce checks.
Yeah, basically, right. And you want to have, how much again?
Four months.
Four months, and historically, that was $170,000. So that would free up for our purposes later in the discussion of how much money can we spend on special projects?
Yeah.
Infrastructure-related items, just over $7,000 that you could probably take from that cash on hand and apply it to those other balances in the ARPA funding or the Long-Term Capital Improvement.
So why three months, four months and not three months?
The reason for four months is a little more conservative than, than operating a three-month, and it, and it ensures that we, we cover that period in case there's something. If there's a natural disaster that happens and it shuts down or impacts the appraisal district's ability to issue that, those revenue, property tax revenues to the city when we need them in December and January, say there's another winter storm, that would make sure that we don't run into any issues on that front. So it just, it's just more insurance, if you will. The likelihood of us getting another winter storm in Central Texas like we did this last year is probably low.
Right.
Probably extremely low.
But, I mean, sometimes I know that we've also been kind of tight at the end of the fiscal year to as far as staying on budget. I don't know how tight we were this time, but it would be nice to have that little cash flow.
Yeah, it's, so. Yeah, so it also, it does protect in the case of if we are off in our projected revenues and our budget, our budget revenues, and we maintain our budgeted expenses, and we run into a budget deficit, this would help cover a budget deficit at the end of the fiscal year. It is. My recommendation is to go with the, what's presented here as alternative to the four-month reserve for now. If, if later down the line, we.
Okay, actually, all of this.
Yeah, it's up to the city council. My right, this is just my right.
I know, it's a good idea, I like it.
If we're all on board with that, I think we're.
No problem with that.
Well, it seems like a majority, you're thinking that, or have seen it pass that a majority of the property taxes are paid in January.
Yeah, we get a good little, we get a sizable check in December, a big, a big portion of it comes in December, lesser in January, and then it kind of fades out from there, but between December, January, and a little bit February is probably what we're getting.
I think we. February is late, you have to pay a penalty by, by February first.
Or if you're, or if you're gonna go before the ARB, if you're going to, if you know, if you're going to go for them for, to contest your taxes. Okay, so you get it.
Well, most people are probably, depending on what their personal tax circumstances are, they might have a, a reason of paying in December.
You know what, since the federal income tax laws have changed, you gotta have well over $10,000 to make, to make, to deduct your property taxes. A lot of people are probably paying in January, I assume, unless they change it.
December, January.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, but this cash on hand does, is, it covers that period where it's most critical. It's there throughout the year, though. It doesn't go, it doesn't go away.
So we're saying, how much is that again? For?
So what I, I, my recommendation is alternative to maintain a reserve amount of about $170,000 of ca, of operating cash flow reserve.
But even if it is at that, even if we had to like go into there and dip in there, we still could. Yeah. It's just using a conservative, conservative number.
Yeah.
But it, it still doesn't mean that, you know, we, we would still be able to utilize those funds if we needed to.
That's, that's, that seems reasonable to me.
All right. Lisa, I got the chat up now. If you had any questions, I'll, I'll be looking for them. There's nothing else around the table, I'll go, I'll go to the next slide. All right, so the next slide, we're going to, we talked the general fund, cash on hand, how we're going to get in the long-term capital improvement funds, and so I just want to kind of set the stage with some definitions so we all understand what, what that means. When you capitalize something, when you capitalize a purchase, you're converting that purchase to an asset on your balance sheet. And so at the end of the year, if you, if we're buying pencils, buy $50,000 worth of pencils on your balance sheet, that's showing up as just an expense, gone. If you're buying $50,000 of a capital asset, well, that just goes, that goes into the asset column, and so you're still for that first year out of, out of balance. And you're not losing money in that sense, it's an investment. So that's what capitalizing means. Long-term capital improvements refer to those capital assets, this, the, the city defines that as assets with an estimate useful life next over a year with a capitalization threshold, basically value threshold of greater than $5,000. And so that's, that's pretty, so a computer, unless it's like a really expensive computer, would not be a capital asset. But something like the patrol car could be. The costs of normal maintenance repairs that do not add value to the asset or materially extend an asset's life are not capitalized. That's just general maintenance repair, so like, for example, the building, we're doing little repairs here for the air conditioner. That's not going to be a capital expense, but if we were going to do something with a foundation, that could be probably capitalized. That gets important when we look at road costs, the street and road improvements and expenses, so pothole fixing and those sort of things, those do not extend the, the life of the road. Resurfacing a road, I think, could qualify, I think it would. I think there's a very valid argument that it extends the, the life of that road, at least by a few years. And so when, when we go into what we can, roads are the most front of mind when we get to long-term capital improvements spending. On the American Recovery Plan Act, there are five potential uses. They are support public health expenditures. That's the first one. The second one is address negative economic impacts caused by COVID public health emergency. Those are kind of, that's where the funding is going out of the city generally, to some other organization or, or something else. The next are something that the city would do internally. Replace lost public sector revenue, if we saw, if we were having revenue deficits, the prior fiscal year, we could pay ourselves back to cover our bills. We could provide premium pay for essential workers because they are at, have all the risk, so if, if we had a EMS service, maybe we would pay a premium for those essential worker. The last one is probably the most, the, the one that we're going to focus on tonight, or I recommend we focus on tonight, is investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Making the question we had was, would revenue lost via courts fall into that category? Possibly. So we, we have to report these expenditures out to it's probably going to go through the state up to the federal level because of, of how we receive the funds. They do allow us to have broad flexibility in deciding what that means and what that means for our community, so could we do that? Yes, I think the argument for doing that is less strong. If we wanted to replace court revenue funds, and by replacing court revenue fund loss, now we have additional funds available for something else. It's a little bit of a shell game, not to use a a pun there, but it, it, it's, it, you're bar, you know, paying, robbing from Paul to pay Steve or whatever.
Feeling from Peter to.
Pay Paul, that's what.
Yeah.
The public sector revenue, that's talking about, for, for us, it's city revenue. So it that one's tricky, my recommendation is stay away from it, if you were, if the city council as a whole is really interested to go down that path, by all means, we can look into it, but I think we're better off looking at the investing in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure.
Totally agree.
So now, wait a minute, so we can't use any of this money on roads?
Yes, we, you cannot use any of this money on roads specifically just for roads. Now, one of the, one of the we can't use any of it. If the road gets tore up because you're putting in water sewer infrastructure and, and putting that road back in place because of that, that's different. So when we get to a place like Gonzales Street.
Right.
Where the, there might be failures in the sewer line because, and it needs to have that wastewater improvement, and the road on top of that sewer line gets fixed. Well, we just fixed the sewer line and a road.
Okay.
So that's, we might be able to get a little creative on some of those things, but going out and you know, repairing the, the far end of Northwestern Road by the traffic light, that's not going to be possible. Using this one, so we could use the Long-Term Capital Improvement Funds possibly for that, but not this.
So here, where you're just giving us.
I'm setting the stage for the conversation, so everybody's working off the same facts and assumptions as we get into the, the projects. Any questions on Long-Term Capital Improvements, ARPA funding? All right. So here are some potential projects, and I've, I've, I've made some recommendations here, but this is our opportunity to get creative, council to get creative and put things where they want them. On the Long-Term Capital Improvement Projects, the recommendation is to pay for the patrol vehicle in cash of $49,151,080 and pay for the Lockhart Street resurfacing. That Lockhart Street resurfacing, it's already been approved by council in previous meeting. The recommendation here is that we add the patrol vehicle to that. So the total cost, total spend plan for, for Long-Term Capital Improvement Projects for that would be $134,000, just over $134,000. Total available is 144,400, so there'd be a balance of $10,000.
So we're gonna pay cash for the cars instead of leasing.
That's the recommendation, and for tonight, that's one, one of the motions that
We're asking.
We're going to be asking.
I mean, what's, we're talking, yes, this clarify, okay.
And I think, you know, that seems to make more sense because then, rather than making the payments for it, then it becomes an asset. And then you're able to like show it that way, rather than if you're continuing to make payments.
Plus, if you buy it, you own the car instead of leasing, you don't own the car after the leasing.
There's, there's some, there's some benefits to doing this.
Gotcha.
Even personal finances, if you're able to buy a car in cash, you're probably better off doing that than. We don't get, so in, in a private lease agreement, you might get with like Honda or Ford or something, you probably are getting some sort of regular maintenance included as part of that lease package and things. That doesn't happen under these lease purchase agreements.
And leases, leases nail you on mileage, Dave.
Luckily, this one wouldn't nail us on mileage. At the end of the, at the end of the lease, we would own it, it's kind of, it's more of a rent-to-own sort of, sort of thing.
Lisa had some questions.
The delta between paying cash, what is the delta between paying cash and leasing? Our initial quote on our lease purchase agreement, given the interest rate that they had, was about $2,000 or $3,000 difference. If we pay, paying the, with the interest costs on top of that.
Does that include the lease paying for the maintenance?
Uh, no, there was, there wouldn't be a.
There's no maintenance on the lease.
It's basically a lease-to-purchase agreement is a is the same, is like a traditional car loan, except that there's a clause in there that if the city decides to not pay, the car reverts, ownership of the car reverts back to the bank. So that's done to make it a little easier to purchase vehicles without having to go to the Attorney General for approval and occurring debt.
Also put down half, and have it happily leased out, seeing them.
Yeah, or any combination.
But I'm wondering, like, since we did the, the contract, are we stuck to, to that? Because maybe we would be able to.
The car is waiting for us. It called me again today.
Yeah.
Asking.
The servers are waiting to go again.
We got flat tire back there going on.
For all the maintenance on that, on either one lease or.
Yeah. It's, it's no difference to the city.
Is there any advantage on insurance or any of that? And, uh, what about, uh, like your, your accounting, long-term, is it any, any advantage of, on accounting on this by cash?
I see is, we've got twelve thousand dollars plus so many dollars a month in the budget next year.
Yep, it frees up the budget.
That line item is trying to be used. It frees up operating funds in.
So the, our, our budget, I believe, had eight thousand dollars set aside for, for making payments. And so that budget line item goes away, and now it frees it up for other uses.
Plus we say two or three thousand.
We don't have any capital to spend it on.
Well, we have, we have everything to.
I mean, we don't have anything, any capital to, to add another line item.
We could always go through a budget amendment, or just not spend on that item, and then at the end of the year, you take that, that savings, that surplus, um, and transfer it back into long-term capital.
So what, what's the interest rate on the, on the, uh, on the lease, like rent-to-own?
I forget what the specific, um, rate number was. It was fairly low, but it equated to about, over the amortization schedule of, of that loan, was about two to three thousand dollars.
So we're not going to get that kind of return if we put the bank, so we're.
We need fifty-two thousand for the, to lease the car. We can get it for forty-nine.
I'm just saying, we're going to save, we're going to save money and not pay in interest, basically.
The, the, the other thing to keep.
You're not going to, you're not going to get, you're not going to get any interest in a savings account per se.
Our, 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 our PFIA accounts right now are not pulling close to that sort of region.
I understand. Okay, that's all I need.
The, uh, the other thing to consider is if you get down the lease purchase agreement two or three years down the road, you've, and you've paid that down payment, you've paid those payments, and you're twenty thousand dollars in. But city falls on hard times, or city council changes, and want to change their mind, and we don't want to pay that lease payment anymore. That funding, that just goes to nothing because that car goes back to the, to the bank, and you get nothing for it. This, this, you're sure. No, you wouldn't be able to sell it. They, they repossess it.
Because it's leased, it's basic.
So in a, in a nutshell, what you, what you're trying to tell me, we're basically going to save two or three thousand bucks by going pay cash.
And then it becomes an asset. If you, if you don't purchase it out, then it's not considered an asset.
But it's only an asset for about a year.
No, you know, the depreciation schedule.
Usually it's five years.
It's five years on the vehicle. So we can be able to count it as an asset, a decreasing.
Stay on budget for.
So, but, so we, we save money by, by paying cash, we don't have to pay interest, and we can appreciate, depreciate it over a period of time. Okay, that's all I need now.
On the ARPA projects, so there's a number of them that kicking about. The Crockett Lift Station Pipe Repairs, we've talked about before. Could be as low as twenty, but some of the higher quotes were twenty-eight. So I use twenty-eight thousand as that estimate for the Crockett Lift Station Pipe Repair. The wastewater lift station, that's what WWLS is. The, those are the electrical upgrades that an electrical engineer proposed that the city consider. Might be a little bit of overkill. It, that is not a one item cost. There are, uh, control panels, including that, for each lift station, a twenty to thirty thousand dollars a pop. Those may or may not need to be spent. There are some minimum, um, spend items in there that are probably equivalent to about forty, forty-five thousand. But if we were going to do a complete electrical upgrade, the total cost of all, taking all those recommendations and spending on it, it's a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars.
So real quick, so you're saying to do this, so the street repair and the sewer will be all locked together?
We would, we would attempt to, to the greatest extent possible, that would allow us to utilize those ARPA funding.
Gotcha, okay.
So the Gonzalez Street Repair had two sections back when the, the, um, engineer proposed this. It was from the back corner to Crockett Street, and from Crockett Street to Main Street. One section was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the other was about a hundred, or about a hundred thirty and eighty thousand dollars. The total length of the street from Main Street to the back was two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's what's listed here, but that does not include the sewer repair, which is the most important part, if you want to check the block on that ARPA project. And, um, we would have to be, we'd have to get, dive deeper into that data, get some more cost estimates from our engineer, to, to, to really flush that idea.
Gonzalez Street, basically, the sewer would be the piping going under the road, pretty much.
Yeah, right now, a long.
Way from it, okay.
It goes, right now, runs a significant portion of the length of the street.
Okay, the piping itself, okay.
And then everybody taps up.
And see, I think whenever we even did our street survey, like Gonzalez was a high priority.
So. Was the worst.
Yes, so we would be able to utilize those funds, and we would be able to, you know, take care of that, and we would be able to do the road, so.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Because if you do sewer lines, you're going to tear up the road.
That's the thought. If you want to do sewer lines and tear up the road, you have to put a new road on top of it.
Yeah, I think that's a, let me get a new road, that's a, that's a good way.
At the actual location, does anything, you know, at, at the ponds?
Great segue. So the next item on that list, the wastewater treatment plant, WWTP wastewater treatment plant, irrigation system upgrades. So, um, one of the comments that we talked about earlier was permitted levels of capacity. One of the ways to increase the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant is to in, is to improve our irrigation system. If better, if we're better able to irrigate, we're, then we can, more, more water we can get out on the ground, the more water we can get in the ponds. So an irrigation system upgrade is, would likely be a cover cost. I don't have a good price estimate for that yet. I talked with our wastewater treatment operator yesterday. You would have, I, we'd have to go with the engineer to, to, to map out something and to, to design something. So there'd be some engineering cost, there'd be some, and then also the construction of, of it. We could potentially reuse some piping that's out there and other things to save cost. But it, it is significant. Okay, what does that entail? How on average do we irrigate? So what it would entail is, right now, we have three ponds, and we have a pump house. Out of that pump house runs a six-inch pipe, six inch diameter pipe, that goes around the, the perimeter of the ponds. At certain junctures, we have little sprinklers, like you'd see in a park, like, that's how, that's how we do our irrigation. What this would do would, it would expand that system to kind of put some more, if you consider that ring, a hub, put some additional spokes possibly coming off of it, getting more high-powered, higher-capacity sprinkler heads on it, and hardening that system from breakages that we run into. More common than we would like, when we have people out there mowing, running over our little sprinkler heads. So creating a more permanent infrastructure. We have pipes out there, we have equip, some equipment out there. We have, there, we'd likely be able to reuse some of it, but it would still be a, we want to get an engineer to really design it, really figure out what's the maximum capacity can we get out of these ponds if our irrigation is, is, is up to snuff. There's also some cost to, to, to do that. We have to remove some trees, so we'd have to work with our, um, our tree removal, uh, contract guy to, yeah.
Is there any way we can transport that to water our parks? You know, I mean, this is the gray water.
So, so some, so something like that is something we could look at. If we're getting an engineer involved and doing a water reclamation project, and maybe even work with the Water Supply Corporation, and see what kind of program or we could come up with to do water reclamation and.
Water green space.
Possibly grant.
Yeah, possibly, you know, come, you know, it's part of the project, it's our side of the house, they get a grant to do the other side. Maybe we treat the water to a certain cleanliness, and then they have their own treatment plant that cleans it the rest of the way, and it gets back into the system. A little heebie-jeebie on that.
Oh, you're talking about like the faulting.
Yeah, you can get it up, up to a drinking water quality. Or even lower to do for land.
So still, they have to come through our little system to get the five-five-two-one thingy.
Oh, well, the, the five, that one, that, uh, treatment plant is separate from this. This is.
Okay, then I'm sorry.
That plant does not, does not discharge into the river, basically.
This. So is there a particular ratio of fluid that needs to stay in the, the lagoon? There probably is, that the engineering has, what, what really, um, matters is how efficient your good bacteria is at kind of cleaning stuff up in the lagoon. Um, so one of the problems we have right now is too much water getting into the lagoon. Just kind of that next item, calls the irrigation upgrades.
We've been known to have droughts.
Real, real quick, do we have a lot of, is there a lot of sludge in those, in those ponds, do you know?
We haven't done a sludge measurement in some time, but I talked to, to our wastewater operator yesterday about that fact. And, um, we, there are some products that he has used in the past that can get the, the ponds to drop some with, you know, putting, putting, putting food in there for the good bacteria to eat up the stuff. We, how, on average, how often do we irrigate? It's a hard to say. A lot, it's, it's, I've been working with, I've, I've talked with Pete about that, and, um, some months it's a lot, some months it's a little. Depends on how full the ponds gets, depends on how much rain we've had, and how often he can irrigate. What his schedule is. When we get to irrigation and capacity, we really need to take it, either refresh whatever engineering assessments were done in the past, which I have not seen and don't know where they exist. Or, um, more likely, have our own engineer come up with their own assessment on, here's the brass tacks on what our system can, can, can.
What kind of expense is that? I mean, just in, in engineering, basic engineering is going to cost, what, ten thousand?
Yeah, we've, we've probably set, uh, we'd work with them on, um, having some sort of not to exceed limit on that assessment.
Like, uh, council member, uh, Bunker stated, you know, water's an issue in this part of the country. If we can recycle that water, that'd be great. I mean, if we could actually eliminate that issue, you know, if a development comes in, they got golf courses or something, we can ship all that water over to them. Not have a, have a problem with their, our capacity.
Okay, the, the next item, um, yeah, there was, there was an engineering study done a few years ago. I'm aware that that study was done. I'm unaware of where the results might be of that engineering study. So, um, other, if, we'll, we'll keep an eye, we'll keep an eye out, see if we can't find it, but. Twenty seventeen-ish, twenty eighteen, so one of that timeframe is wrong, or, I think, I don't know. It's, it's related to the Walton Development Agreement, um, as we discussed before, so.
Also, that would have been fifteen or sixteen.
Kind of, possibly.
Lisa, how long, how long?
You said seven years.
Seven years, Lisa?
It's been going on since twenty thirteen, even twenty twelve, even when the, that development agreement was being cut, but I don't know when that engineering study was done. Yeah, it's a good note to, yeah, I think the result's twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that makes sense. So we can reach out to, um, Mr. Devaney and see if he happens to know where a copy is stored.
And we can go attack the storage area again. We're getting good at going and looking for stuff.
So, so that, that kind, related to that, what also impacts capacity is sewer infiltration. So when we get, we get a lot of stormwater, that's getting pumped out to the ponds. Um, and so one of the things that we can do is work with a firm that can come out here. There's different ways of doing it. There are, you know, with smoke, cameras, what have you. They will, they'll help you find your leaks of, see where, where stormwater, rainwater getting into your sewer pipes, and plug the, that hole, because that means there's less water going out to the ponds, and less water we have to deal with out there, and less ru- wear and repair on our pumps at our lift stations.
And you're talking about just stormwater that's coming in on the land and.
Yeah, so like broken cleanouts or, uh, different things that, you know, maybe a manhole covers, or there's puddling.
Chart of how much, uh, we've had, how much extra we spend each month just on, uh, emergency phone, uh, calls and, uh, maintenance.
Yeah, we do, so the.
Get it going anywhere. We don't need that much maintenance.
Rain, rain here, rain costs money in our si- in our wastewater system because it runs the pumps more frequently than it would otherwise be needed. It possibly could lead to them getting gummed up with something.
How bad is it, you think? I mean, how, how many?
It's significant. It's, it's tens of thousands of gallons on a single rain event.
It's like, like you're talking about the, the down southeast River Road.
That's the, where the main concern is, yeah.
Plug, okay.
So either plug it, or, yeah, just plug, plug the pipe, or go out and remediate where those cleanouts or other issues might be.
All right.
And this is including part of the monies from.
So this, this, this sewer, these projects are kind of your menu to choose from. It's a spending. No, we haven't. So that's, that's where we're at. These are.
Yeah.
These are probably the, the most needed infrastructure things that would qualify under ARPA that we could attack with this funding.
We were building one from the, from the start. How much would it cost? We were doing like a whole new.
If we were going to, if we were going to.
Wastewater treatment.
If we were going to spend infrastructure in the city.
Three hundred, uh, almost four hundred thousand.
On a new treatment plant? So that is a consideration. That is something that the city could consider.
Get a whole brand new one.
It is looking at getting a regional facility. We've had, we have been approached by somebody who's interested in possibly make, doing a private-public partnership with the city, where the private firm would make a, a sizable investment, and install a regional wastewater plant. Probably, it'd probably cost them on a tune of a few million dollars. And then the city would contract them, with them, essentially perpetuity, for them to do the treatment services of that wastewater. I have a hard time thinking that's a good idea, because you, you lose your capacity control costs to the, to the wastewater customers within the city. But if, if there are private firms out there interested enough to, to put up serious cash for that sort of an infrastructure investment, knowing it's going to come to them on the backend, there might be opportunities for the city to look at doing the same. Um, now, we're not going, we don't, two mil- we're not talking two million dollars here, or something like that. We only have three hundred thousand. But it could go towards a, a bigger investment, a bigger project that the ARPA funding is supporting and going. That the ARPA funding is supporting and going towards, so what that would likely look like though, to be quite honest with folks. It would, it would likely involve some sort of tax assessment. Being placed on people within the city and possibly around, depending on how we do that, that would cost.
A bond election or something.
Well, we, we, you could bond for it, what we would likely do is, is look at a way that um. Could increase our ability to also service areas that are within our ETJ with our wastewater system. To spread those costs, not just on the thousand or so, twelve hundred Martindale residents, but also those within the ETJ.
Wouldn't increase our, our utility revenue.
If you have more.
Oh, if you have more customers, it, it, you could, you could see some.
Well, yeah, if somebody else is managing it.
Oh, no, if we did the public partner partnership, there. Freak, what would likely happen is rates would, for city customers would go up, probably double.
And in a city.
No, and wouldn't.
Uh huh, in a municipality, though, that's where you get your revenue from, is from like water and, you know, services and stuff like that, that's where. The city's able to get their money, so to, I wouldn't, I couldn't see a private firm, you know, doing it.
Well, it depends what the.
You know, I want to keep the.
You gotta read the details of the area.
Yeah, so there's, there are um cities in, in our, in our region and Caldwell County that are, they're strongly considering this. Or even moving forward with this public, private-public partnership. Um, it's something that we, I, I suggest we listen to when it comes up, but we don't have, it's not something we decide on tonight.
Okay, so discussing that conversation, so what we definitely need to do though, we still have replaced the pipe repairs, we have to do the electrical upgrades, we still have to do the street repair. Do that infrastructure, the irrigation, if, you know, the sewer filtration, that could be weighted on. Until, unless, and they could have a new plant put in, but we still do all that piping in the city. So that could be, that could be, that could be done first. Those three, those three issues right there, Gonzalez, electrical, electrical upgrades and Crockett Lift Station, those are going to have to be done anyway.
But then we really wouldn't need a, to, if we're upgrading as opposed to rebuilding. Then, you know, what, if we're spending to upgrade, why go?
Well, we still have to, the city has to have the infrastructure to send the sewer to the plant. By doing that, you, you do the infrastructure in our city that goes to the new plant, if we had a new plant.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I, I say, don't do any of these repairs, let's do the.
Well, they're upgraded.
But I, I, I say no on it.
Yeah, so what we can do is that, there's at least one firm that was interested in doing that.
We don't really know though, at this point.
What's that?
We really don't know with this partnership deal, it's all.
Yeah, so we, we could have, we could have that wastewater provider, that private entity who's interested in doing this, make a presentation to the council. They were going to give us some additional information, um I spoke with them last before we went ahead and did that, so it's very preliminary, very early, didn't want to bog down at council meeting, getting too deep into that. But that's something that we can put.
Lisa's saying it would be millions to build a new wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, probably a couple million.
The upgrades.
Probably, probably, you're probably looking at least two.
It depends on the agreement.
Yeah. So I, so I. Well, no, no, well, two, it's going to cost somebody about two million dollars to do it, who does it is the question, right?
Who does it?
Is it the city who does it, is it?
Yes, correct.
Um, private, private firm that does it.
Just got to let's see what, see what they come up with, okay.
And, and, and even then, you know, we should make a, a form decision about where our capacity on our current system is before we.
But if this takes a period of time, we, we, I think the priority would be to fix our upstream infrastructure first. What do you think about that? And then the other stuff functioning now, focus on the lift stations and the pipes.
That makes sense from a prioritization standpoint.
Okay, I agree, okay.
The other item on here that we could consider is water infrastructure. Now, the city, the city of Martin, Martindale, we operate our wastewater. But we could, this can also be used on water infrastructure, so we could partner with the Martindale Water Supply Corporation on addressing any of their needs as well. Interesting thing that comes up when we talk about the Martindale Water Supply Corporation is, and I've, I've mentioned it in passing before. Is if we, I would be very interested in, if the city council wanted to go through with this. Possibly through a resolution or, or some motion that the city council would make to. Enter formally, have, start, begin formal discussions with the Martindale Water Supply Corporation. On consolidating our two organizations completely, to where the city of Martindale would, would uh assume their. Their CCN, their jurisdiction and their customers. And be able to provide a savings back to those customers, the reduced overhead cost of operating two separate utility companies essentially. Reducing it down to one, passing the savings on down to the customer and setting up an, a opportunity for um. Members of that board and members of that staff to integrate with the city of Martindale.
Yeah, they have to go in front of the board.
Right, this, this would have to go through the board, it'd have to go through their, their uh vote. But one of the things to consider is if the city is willing to put up some of this um ARPA-related funding. On any infrastructure projects that the water system might need, that could go a long way and. Even, even more so, making that make sense for, for that um user base, so.
I don't really approach the city that much, fucking hell, do you then?
We frequently, so when we, when we get into development agreements and there are some significant development agreements being bantered about.
Right.
Um, that. At this point are really pie in the sky sort of ideas that people have kind of approached us to and want to wait to see what's real before you get council involved. But some of them are very, quite significant and um the limiting factor. Is in our, in our ability to negotiate that is that. We negotiate the wastewater and other infrastructure, but the water infrastructure is completely separate. And for people within the city limits, for people within the ETJ and people who might be outside the ETJ but are customers of the Martindale Water Supply Corporation. Your ability to influence the future of the city is tied to that water system. More so than just about anything else that this region has. A developer, they weren't, they need water, they need wastewater, the rest of it, electricity, the rest of it can kind of take care of itself. Um, and so having those utilities. Centralized improves our ability to negotiate better deals. For example, what, what might have been with the Walton Development if. The, the Water Supply Corporation, the city of Martindale were the same and we were in a different negotiating position with them. What, what, what might have that development agreement turned out to be otherwise? Would we have disanexed land? Would we have created a municipal utility, rather than create a municipal utility district? Would we have a wastewater application on our desk right now that's going to pump dirty water into Hemp Hill Creek? Yep, these are the sort of things that um are significant uh consideration and so. We can look at using these ARPA funds as an additional incentive to, to improve the water infrastructure of the city. And as, as a, kind of a peace office offering to those customers. And say, we want to work with you, we want to reduce your rates and we want to invest in you and we want to invest in the system, make it better for everybody. That's something that we could do with this ARPA funds.
With the Martindale Water Supply though, they have a limitation of how many acre feet of water that they have acquired over a period of time and so. There's an actual limitation to, as you say, to the capacity, so it would, the city would probably be in the same problematic situation of. Having to find where we would acquire more water, Martindale Water Supply is having a hard time right, right now trying to get more water.
Yes, but when you're, when you have the power of a municipal government, your ability to negotiate those water purchase deals, those surface water purchase deals. I think could change and um your ability to, to pay for them might change, ability to finance them might change and so um. I had an opportunity to discuss with a financial advisor, um a consultation on city matters. That um he just so happened to also be involved in the wholesale of surface water. With, with somebody that the Martindale Water Supply Corporation purchases from. And after I found that out, I mentioned this idea of, you know, it'd be really, I want to present to council the opportunity for, for us to. Maybe combine organizations with the Water, Water Supply Corporation and he was supportive of it, he said, yeah, I think.
Steve?
No, no, not Steve, this, this, this financial advisor who advises a water wholesaler in the region.
Yeah.
That they work with. From a financial advisor perspective to his organization, he said, yeah, that'd be a recommendation that we'd support, you know, all day.
It places the frantic we chatting.
All right, so let's catch up, I'm sorry, uh better understand what a private provider might look like before considering upgrading our current system would like to be fully informed. I think that's a, a great idea, um and that's, that's talking about a wastewater treatment plan.
I agree.
Before we spend a bunch of money on it, we probably want to have a better idea what that offer is.
But we could do the upstream stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Um. Still commodes or can be flushed, developers are, are stuck. We, we can look at getting a, a, a third-party advisor, we probably, probably would, at least on the financial aspects. I've had some preliminary discussions, outreach to Texas Water Development Board. Um, and others that, that are Public Utility Commission and, and others that might be involved in any sort of merger. And from their perspective, they saw this as a pretty clean, one of the cleanest options to go. A lot of times when they get involved in advising any sort of transfer of um rights or, and property. It, it can get real sticky because you have competing interests, this one, Martindale Water Supply Corp, Corporation, CCN, their, their jurisdiction. Is, it's a clean boundary if the city would take it on, the, the biggest concern that they would likely have is how are rates being used? And that rates for customers who are outside the city limits are not taken advantage of. And so I think we can easily address that through ordinances, advisory boards, rate-setting procedures and other things to address that concern.
But I think the first thing is like having a conversation with them.
I've had some conversations with Steve, um the general manager over there. Be honest with you, he entertained, he was, he was pleasantly entertained by this idea, but he, he wasn't very supportive uh on the onset. The concern that I, that I hear from them is, you know, you know, they, they got a smooth-running operation. And they would want to make sure that continues to be a smooth-running operation and um. I think there's ways that we can ensure that if there, there was a merger, that they would be able to continue to. Have, have very, very limited impact to their operations.
Yeah.
As much as possible, but still achieve those cost benefits and savings.
Still want to be separate but still have support. And that would, and us to be able to support each other.
Yeah, so hi- his interest really lied on um. Yeah, so the question from, I'll get back to yours, the question from uh Lisa was, like to hear more about the notion of Martindale Water Spike. And city merging, how do we officially start this conversation? What I would, yeah, what I would like to do is um at the conclusion of this discussion, there'll be probably a series of motions we'll want to make. One of those motions being that city council moves to, to appoint the city administrator and the mayor. To initiate formal discussions and negotiations with Martindale Water Supply. Of um a, a potential. Um.
I don't see how we can maintain it though and pay their employees and their pensions and all that stuff, I mean, we're having a hard time even paying our own. Workforce that we have or even would envision to like to have and we're having problems uh with the lift station. And we see we need to spend a la- large sum on that and.
So the good news is they are, they are a solvent organization, they are able to um pay their bills. Based on the revenues that they get from the fees that they charge for their water. And so they, they have, you know, loans and debts that are out there, they have their overhead expenses. And they're able to service all that with, with the revenues that they collect.
And I think a good um example of like a merger was whenever they did a, apply for the grant and it did come through the city of Martindale. On behalf of the water, you know, uh corporation, so that was um, you know, an example of, you know, working together for the benefit of. Of Martindale Water Supply Company, so.
Yeah, so I, we've worked with them in the past, um per- periods have been better than, some periods in time have been better than others. But I think we have a, we're on a good path, I think.
But it is, it is a five oh one three C, correct?
I don't know, I, no, they are, they were.
Amber alert.
I thought they're governed by a board.
They are governed by a board that, that, they're um, they are, they were.
Uh huh, because I thought that they were.
What's that? Yeah, they're.
They're five oh.
They're, they're, well, they're, they're a government entity, they're, they're a political entity, so they have a um. They wouldn't be a nonprofit, I mean, they're, they operate as a nonprofit, but I don't, they're, they're organized under state statutes.
But I think like if you're a nonprofit, then, you know, you can't be like a nonprofit but not, not be a nonprofit, do you?
That's, it's a, it's a member-owned corporation, that's why when, if you start, when you move to the city, you pay a hundred dollar um admission fee. You move away, you get your hundred dollars back. Another side little, little note, if they merged, everybody would get their hundred dollars back.
So I think what Jared's asking is permission to start those negotiations and the city council has the say so all the way.
Yeah.
I wrote down the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, I have it, let's study.
Five oh one C twelve.
Oh, okay. Five oh one C twelve.
Google one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the, they, they operate on their own bylaws and things. There's not any more discussion on the water, the other option is to invest money in broadband infrastructure, I understand. Uh through the mayor that the county is looking to do that, I don't have a good sense of exactly what that would look like other than to. Pay a internet service provider to come in and start, install fiber optic cables within the city. Uh for future customers to, to potentially use.
And mutual irrigation.
So broadband infrastructure is another use, I think in the order of priority has probably. We've, we have run out of funds.
I agree, I agree.
Slow on your list.
Yeah, it's low on my list, so if I move this out of the way, so that, that list. Which is those first three items is three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars as a, at a top line.
Did you say that the two twenty-one does not include any sewer?
Right.
The two twenty-one does not include any sewer, that's just wrote.
We did the entire string.
Unless we figured out how much the sewer is.
Right, right, so we would, and that project would only be applicable to the sewer portion of that project and. Two twenty-one is, is a number, because we have a number. two twenty-one is a is a number, because we have a number. But it, I wouldn't use it as, it's at at least two hundred thousand dollars as a start.
Yeah.
If it gets, if it, if you start tearing down the section of road that you're doing to do the sewer, it's sewer cost is going to be underneath there as well, so.
About how long does that sewer line go down Gonzales Street? Is it quite a?
I think, I think it's almost the entire. Because you have, you have the sewer line gravity feeding down to Crockett Street from the north. And from Main Street's gravity feeding up to Crockett Street and that Crockett Street, then it goes on.
They not buried enough?
I don't know why, why.
That is a good, that's a good strategy, that's an excellent strategy here. For the road repair and for the sewer line replacement, because you've got to do the sewer line first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Couldn't we do it in two parts like what we had talked about before?
Yeah, well, we'll have to get an engineer to get out here to to look at it and I want to be careful that we're not digging holes and replacing them.
Right.
You know, when we come, because this, this is a reportable expense, we have to report it out. If something comes wrong in an audit or something, then we have to be able to justify it, so.
Could the, could the engineer got us on that? I mean, for this funds or does that have to be a lawyer?
The combination that to. I don't know, it's not, not, it's not going to be the very hard legal consideration. It's going to be the engineer more during.
That, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Lisa said the last engineering was the cost thirty thousand, just for, just for Gonzalez, Lisa?
No, that was for the area, um the capacity. The wastewater treatment pa- capacity.
Oh.
Due to the engineering.
Why would we need to do another?
The water company is not nonprofit.
Yeah, we have to do the study again.
Yeah, if we just did a stu- if we just did a study not so long ago, why would we do another?
We would, we would likely want to pay our engineer to look at it because it it was Walton's engineer who did it.
Yeah.
I thought we did get our city engineer to look at it. We did, didn't we, Lisa?
At Gonzales Street.
Uh we're, we're, we're talking about two different things, baby.
Yeah.
With the treatment plan.
I'm talking about the treatment plan. Uh Lisa, whenever we did the uh over there in the library, we had, did have, our attorney did, I mean, our engineer looked over their engineer's work, correct? Do you remember that?
Yeah, she's saying that the Walton picked up the tab.
Uh huh.
We didn't have to pay the thirty K.
We chose the engineering firm.
And we chose the engineering firm.
So I don't see why we would have.
So we need to find that study.
We had to find that study and we likely want to validate it with our engineer.
Uh Lisa, or Sonya, do you remember which engineering company it was?
It wa- um I know that I probably have it in my email. Um.
But if, at that time, it could have been Haley Lee. I know the city used them a lot. But I'm not sure if that's who did that one.
DCS Engineering.
Alright, thanks Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
What?
DCS Engineering.
D C.
So yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I just don't see why we would have to do it.
So the reason why we the engine, where we would need engineering costs. Really, anytime you're doing over twenty thousand dollars, you have to have, by state statute, you have to have an engineer oversee that work. And so they're, they likely would be involved in any of this. The significant studies um that would be needed would be the Gonzales Street repair, the irrigation system repair. Those will be the two areas, irrigation system um upgrades. Those will be the two areas where we use engineering study.
And then for Gonzales Street, didn't they do the study whenever we did the presentation with our engineer though?
That was just on the road. They didn't consider what sewer.
Is under there.
Was under there, what might be.
You gotta dig up the roads and fix the pipes.
Yep.
Yeah, did have to fix the pipes and.
Dig it up to do the study too, right, or no?
Maybe any portions.
What Sam Warf is doing right now, digging up the roads and putting in wastewater lines.
Alright.
Okay, so we need uh on the top.
Yeah.
Should I go back to the top? The long-term capital improvement projects, we've already uh we have already approved the Lockhart Street resurfacing. That should be done in November. And so what is your preference on outright purchasing the vehicle, police car?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we purchase the patrol vehicle outright.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, on this, uh do we have to have an individual vote? Okay, so Mike seconded it, so that's a yes. Jan, how do you vote? Uh and Sonya made the motion, so that's a yes. Sam, how do you vote?
Yes to outright buy it.
And Lisa? Is it yes? She's nodding her head yes. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the motion carries. Four to one, yeah. So we will purchase the vehicle outright.
So on the ARPA projects, we don't necessarily need to decide definitively today what project we want to do. Um you have some time. The, the one item I do want some clarity on is the Crockett Lift Station pipe repairs. We can we could potentially fund that out of the budget, but that would uh put us behind the eight ball a little bit. That's been basically half of our um wastewater budget. So we we probably need additional funds later down the line to be if we ran into an emergency situation, tap into our emergency fund or something.
But this, we need to have that done.
People have that ARPA fo- grant fund for that?
I believe, yes, I, I think that's.
Go ahead and make a motion and and use that fund for that uh.
Yes, we can.
We can use the emergency fund a- and then pay the emergency fund back when we get the second payment.
Well, in this case, it's only twenty, we already have, we already have a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars cash on hand. So we can, we can, all we need to do is make sure we refresh our uh purchasing uh procedures. Make sure that if there's any special requirements underneath that grant funding. Because grant funding is, you have to follow the federal purchasing guides. Make sure we comply with what we need to do there. Go out for our bids, get our quotes again. And um so it's not going to be overnight that we just get that fixed, but we would start that project.
How critical is that in those lift station repairs?
The the Crockett Lift Station repair is probably, is more, probably even more critical than Lockhart Street resurfacing.
No backup.
We, we, we're down to one pipe.
What do you, what do you suggest we do?
I suggest that we use, that we use the ARPA funding on that project upfront. Eight thousand, up to, you know.
Okay.
That's an estimate, twenty-eight thousand's.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead, that I'm, uh we move to accept the Crockett Street Lift Station pipe repairs um in the amount of twenty-eight thousand doll- dollars uh for the uh money to come out of the ARPA fund.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to uh fund the Crockett Lift Station pipe repairs. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, no, we have to do an individual.
I believe we've got Lisa's eye already.
Uh Lisa said aye. Jan?
Aye.
And uh Sonya is an aye and Mike is an aye?
Aye.
So it's unanimous. The motion carries.
So on these other items, um electrical upgrades, that already had an engineer look at it. We can dig into that in a future meeting if we want. The Gonzales Street sewer repair, if if the council wants, at this stage, what we do is issue a task order to Freeland and Turk, our engineering firm, to explore this option. And that would cost some money. Um should be covered under the grant. But it, to to firm up what that project scope would look like, what would be covered, what would not be covered, what a total cost would be. And um get their input on that.
But we don't know how much it would be at this point.
Not overall, not as an entire project.
No, but just for, you said they would have to do a study.
They would probably do a study. It would probably um probably on the order of two, three thousand, maybe five thousand dollars.
Talking about just, oh.
Just to do this.
I skipped, I said, I mentioned the electrical upgrades. We can, we already have an engineering assessment on that, so we can skip that line item. Going on to the next Gonzales Street, we'll need an engineering assessment done. That's probably going to be in the range of three to five thousand dollars, I would think.
And we should be able to use what we had been done before, right?
Well, for some of, some of that, yeah. So probably, may not even be that expensive. Depends on how I have not approached this to them yet. I'm not sure if they won't have to do any sort of um exploratory digging.
Want to table this, maybe wait?
We could, if, if, we can do that as well. Or we could go, or we could kick.
Know what we want or I I think we need more information.
I would, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and give our city administrator a permission to uh getting negotiations with the engineering firm uh with a task order for Gonzales Street for the sewer and the street re- study, for the study.
So do, so, am I getting a authorization to issue a task order or getting a quote for a task order and bringing it back?
Getting a quote for the task order and bringing it back.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, um. Can we do a all vote? Does it have to be individual?
I would like to keep it all individual for this purpose.
Okay. Okay, so Mike uh seconded it, so he's a yes. Jan?
Aye.
And Sonya is a yes. Sam?
Aye.
And we also have Lisa with an aye.
She seconded too.
Oh, you made me do it.
This is for the.
Who seconded it? You or Lisa?
I don't care, so whatever you want to do. Let, let, let Lisa second.
Three thousand dollars for an assessment.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously and Lisa seconded it.
So we said instead of the cloud thing, yeah.
Alright, so on the um irrigation system upgrades and infiltration repairs, I think we'll just table those items for now. I don't think we need to, um we don't necessarily need a motion on that. And that's just a recommendation unless there, someone wants to make a motion.
On Brad that, I can reach out to the county and see what they are gonna do.
Yeah, I'd like to see what.
So the only other um okay, Lisa's comment is we should have a motion to table. So uh motion to table the irrigation system upgrades and sewer infiltration repairs.
If you make that motion, Lisa.
Why should we have to table it? Make a motion?
Well, no one, no one yet. It was just a comment.
I'll make a motion that we table the W W T P irrigation system upgrade, sewer infiltration repairs and water.
Just do one of them?
Just those, those two.
Those two, alright.
Which two? Was it?
Information about it, I guess.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. Sonya seconded it. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays?
Lisa seconded it again, so we're, we're messed up on.
She needs a date. We need a date.
We need a date to table it too?
Yeah.
The next council meeting, the next council meeting.
Okay.
We said until we got more information.
I was, I was the second. Okay, so Sonya.
Okay, so that carries.
Do you get a vote from Lisa on that?
Yes.
Alright, there it is. Alright, on the water um infrastructure, so the, the the recommendation on that is the City Council approve.
We haven't voted.
No.
We're, we're just bringing it out.
No.
No, we didn't vote on the irrigation.
Yeah, we just didn't. We just tabled it.
Oh.
I just didn't do it individually.
Oh, okay.
The, so the motion I'm looking for, for the water infrastructure is um authorizing the city administrator and or the mayor to enter into discussions with Martin Del Water Supply Corporation on potential consolidation and use of ARPA funding on water infrastructure.
Uh I make a motion uh to appoint our city administrator and mayor to enter into a former discussion uh with Martin Del Water Supply Company about a potential com- uh yes, oh, yes, merger and uh with the use of ARPA funds.
Lisa seconded.
Second, Lisa. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
So with the ARPA funds being used, that's mostly just pay you for your time to go talk with them?
No. So. It's, it's a discussion with them on what needs that they might have that could be funded with these ARPA available funds.
And we would have to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just seeing what their, what their needs are.
What those funds would be used for.
So similar to if we have a list of, here's our wastewater system repair needs, what sort of repair needs?
It's just giving Jared the right to go talk to them.
Yeah, but not spending any money yet, just.
No, no, just talking.
What it will cost.
Yeah. Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will go ahead and vote. Um Mike?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
And Sonya? And Sam?
Aye.
And Lisa? It is, the motion carries unanimously.
And on the broadband infrastructure, I don't know what we want to do there. If we want to table it until the county approves of their broadband plan or maybe we just let it, let it lie? I don't, I don't know.
So I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we um allow Mayor Glaze to enter in discussions with the county and to seeing, and to what type of broadband infrastructure we could attain from the county and present that to the council, please.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Alright, that takes us through seven B.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a good discussion, alright. Um, the this next item uh is, is a, was a tabled. It's regarding the proposed utility rate increase, and we discussed this when we talked about the budget. And it was increasing the rates by a dollar for each um rate setting. I'll pull that table back up. The reason it's on this agenda instead of the next is in case the council wanted to consider that for that rate increase for the October, for the billing that goes out in October eighteenth. So, because we wouldn't have time to, yep.
And the reason I brought it up is because this is the month where.
And the reason I brought it up is because this is the month where we adjust people's usage. Level one, level two. And it would make people's bills only change once.
Yeah.
Whereas if we set their, their level this month and then change the rate next month, it creates a flurry of people because people are usually rebuilding the same every month.
Okay.
And it would make it have been changed on two months in a row.
In which months are you using to do the rates?
I don't remember.
December through February, I think.
Yeah.
Or February through March, something like that.
So the rates are already calculated for everybody. And all you have to do is
Okay.
Use those rates to determine how much they're going to be raised.
Well, what you do, when you say rate, that sounds like a dollar to me.
Yeah, I'm talking about water rate.
It's, it's, it's water usage.
Usage, okay.
And, and we have a three-month average and we determine if they're a level one or a level five or a base level. And that gets adjusted once a year without raising any rates. But we also, we also have the rate change on the table.
And it's different for the water, isn't it? Water.
Their rates.
I think, I think they're.
I mean, for their usage, excuse me.
So what we do is we take their usage, what, what the Water Supply Corporation provides data on their customer usage. That's also sent to the city. And we take that to determine what band of billing you fall into. And we take it during the winter when the usage is less typically. And so that kind, that would set your usage level from there forward. That usage level is one part of the equation, how big your utility bill is. The other part of the equation is the rate. So if you use three thousand gallons averaged in that period, you're a three thousand gallon user, that's your category. So your bill right now would be twenty-eight fifty. If there was a rate increase on that, I would go up from twenty-eight fifty, that person, to thirty dollars and fifty cents.
Is that three thousand scenario is base of two thousand plus.
Plus a thousand.
So if we're going to do it, let's do it now.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and go with the proposed utility rate increasing for FY twenty twenty-two. Begin in October.
Begin in October, not, and FY trying to, but to begin in October.
Begin in October of twenty-one.
Yeah, this, the bill that goes out next week.
Yes.
But didn't you say that the rate's going to go?
We have a motion on it. Okay, is there a second? And then we can have more discussion.
I'll second it. We had a discussion.
Okay, now is there any?
But it sounds like we are wanting to increase the rate of the charge by October eighteenth when the three-month period, December, January, and February wouldn't even have occurred yet in order to determine the.
It's back, it's backdated. So we.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, so nine months ago. We're taking data from nine months ago to set the rate for this next go around of the town.
And mechanically, what we're trying to do is keep Adrian from having to go through four hundred utility accounts two months in a row. And just, just go through them once.
Yeah, so if you got a raise in your bill this month of a dollar and the next month it got raised again, it'd be, yeah, it'd be very.
We're going to be calling it questioning. It's going to take a lot of time.
Some customers, they'll fluctuate on that use level. So if you're, if you use, use less than two thousand gallons, you're always using less than two thousand gallons, you're, without a rate change, your bill won't change. But if you go from a two thousand gallon user to a three thousand gallon user, your bill will go up, not because of the rate change, but because you're using more water. So in this case, if we're doing a rate, if you're doing a usage bill change, my, and we're considering a rate bill change, let's do the usage and rate together.
Yeah.
And then, well, we, we had the long discussion about it at a, at our previous meeting. You know, about the reasons when the last increase was the, the maximum amount that somebody's bill would be raised is three dollars from a dollar to a three-dollar increase. And how that increase would benefit the city.
Yes.
And the workers.
Lisa is also commenting that there will be more backlash when both are done in the same month cycle. I disagree. And then what is the percentage of residents on each level?
I have that right here. I at least have an estimate of, based on what we've used. All right. So this is going to look a little bit wonky at first. All right, so here is column A, the type of, type of customer, the level, the gallons of, that equates to that level, the rate applied to that usage rate, and the number of customers within that category. Residential base plus two, here's the rate, there's a number of customers with the billing would be. So over here, five percent of our customers are commercial customers. Fifty-six percent of our customers pay just our base usage only. Thirteen percent additional is the base plus one thousand gallons. Another ten percent is the base plus two thousand gallons. And that is, let me move some things around, get this out.
I mean, the thirteen percent.
That's the seventy-eight percent. And then you have, here's that eighty-three percent is.
Does that use more?
These customers. So majority of our customers fill, are, fall within these bands. Very, very few, you have a five percent here, that are six thousand gallon user. From there, there's very, very few who use much more than that. That's why I was saying, most customers between the, between the commercial and the first three bands are eighty-three percent of all of our customers would see a, a rate increase of three dollars or less. Someone would see a rate increase of just a dollar. Fifty-six percent of our customers would see a rate increase of just.
Does the commercial rate apply to someone that, say exclusively, might use a residence as an Airbnb? Is that considered commercial?
Only if they have more than four, I believe is what the.
What was?
Four.
Residents.
Four residences.
They're in the same.
Four rooms.
Four different units.
Yeah, forty units, there we go.
It's more than four.
More than four.
It's more, great.
Or more.
No, but, well, you want to use a, more than four, so it's five equal to or greater than five?
Yes. Gotcha. Break it down.
Integers. All right, that's, that, I think that answered your question, right, Lisa?
There's another question on the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. What month of year do we implement the increase for solid waste based on our TDS contract? May? Generally, yep, it's May. I think we, we were a month late this last time, where I think we did it in June, when we should have done it in May. But we don't, but we do not get the, the water usage data at that time, at least.
We get, we do. We actually get the water usage in March.
Do we really have the same month that it's done? Okay.
Yeah, we, we get it early and it sits on my desk until the new fiscal year.
All right.
We could change it then.
Yeah, I think we could, we could change it for next May, relooking at those rates and then doing all the billing, setting that bill in May.
So how is it a three-dollar increase instead of two? Like if you use three thousand gallons? It would be a dollar more and then the minimum from goes from twenty-five to twenty-six, so that would be two dollars.
You're, you're, you're exactly right. In that, that case, what, what that three-dollar reference to is the number of customers. So eighty-three percent of our wastewater customers use four thousand gallons of water or less. At a four thousand gallon water usage, that's a, that's where you get the three dollar.
For the three thousand and then an extra dollar for the four thousand.
Yep.
Then like, I mean, I just want to say like, how can you not see like, you know, I, I mean, I understand that people use water, but I'm all about like water conservation also. And I don't think that increasing the amount to what it is for four thousand or over four thousand gallons of wastewater is not bad.
And what was the reasoning between raising that, raising the rates to help us with the budget?
It ensured we had a balanced budget without have, without needing to adjust costs in other places. We increased costs on personnel. We maintained costs in every other area. And so to make sure that in balance, recommend a monthly rate.
And that we were able to pay our employees, you know, a decent wage.
All right. There is a motion and a second.
There is a motion and a second. And hearing no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Jan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mike is an aye because he seconded it and Sonia made the motion. Sam, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Lisa? Thank you. The motion carries.
Using emojis. Some emojis on there.
Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Does anyone have anything to add to this list or take off?
Oh, I gave you what I, um.
Yes. So Sonia gave me about a grant that Blue Bonnet had granted to Round Top.
And L C R E.
Oh, L C R E. And Blue Bonnet.
All the time for small cities.
For small cities. It was for beautification of the town square. And so we'll put that on next time to look into that.
And I'll be able to discuss more about it then, but not only will I be discussing it, but I would be willing to spearhead and also work with our city administrator and, you know, with helping out with billing out the application, which is, you know, you have to submit it by January. So I just want to get the ball rolling on that.
So when's the next meeting, the date?
Oh, we get skip next week.
I'd like to say discuss, maybe possibly maybe do a census five-five-two-one. Issue came up with Walton Group. Do you think we should have maybe a workshop, public hearing, something informal? I mean, I know we're way, way premature because they haven't even submitted their permit in the newspaper, but should we have a, a meeting?
We'll put something on, I think what the agenda could be is a discussion, yeah, we're probably looking at an updated resolution based on some of the preliminary things that we, we received from the River Advisory Board on wanting to make our current resolution more stringent on the phosphorus than the also having on the agenda a discussion with the representative of that development and have him present this data to the city council.
And possibly open it up for public comment?
Well, any, anything on the agenda is open for public comment.
That three.
It would not, it would not.
What I meant is having.
This would not be a public hearing.
Okay.
This would not be a.
I mean, could we have people speak with the River Advisory Committee could put their two cents worth in in discussion with the five-five-two-one?
As part of a public comment? Or, or have the board do a presentation?
A presentation with their speakers, where they, therefore they could speak more than three minutes. And.
I think. I think that if we, if we're on the resolution or on the, on the the application that we received, on the application itself, I think if we want to discuss, how about this, why don't we just put it on discussion, the application wastewater treatment plan?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that know a lot about this stuff. They've been going through this with Cherryville, HK, all this.
We could also ask the River Committee to put that on their meeting, on their agenda, and we could attend their meeting.
Right, and they can, and they can make a presentation.
Have Joy report on it.
Yeah, issue.
Whatever, whatever.
Because we really don't know what Walton is proposing yet.
They seem to be communicating with us pretty well, so.
All that whole book kind of lays a bunch of stuff out.
Yeah.
And there's one, one more thing that I wanted to request to be on the agenda.
Okay.
And it has to do with late fees after four-thirty on the, the, when people are coming in to pay their bill and they're charged a late fee for coming in after four-thirty. And I'll get into discussion more about that. But it has to do with late fees.
I would just put it on there, the dilapidated house ordinance. I think, I think we need to start checking that out and really look and examine buildings that are extreme dilapidation.
When do you want that on the agenda?
Well, I think we got enough maybe for next time unless we want to do it next time.
We probably have enough through December.
Lisa's been wanting to do stuff on no, it's on the, the housing, what do you call that? The, where you do the B and B, short-term rentals. She's been asking to do something on short.
Did you see what C Old wrote?
Lisa wants a planning zoning next.
Tuesday.
Or Mike wants one, sorry.
Well, I'll request one.
Yeah, yeah, so here. So.
We need a agenda.
And then O's. What does it say about the?
Subdivision application.
All right, so for, for the record, Mayor, can we please plant, we need to, having a planning and zoning meeting next Tuesday or approve a subdivision application. Councilmember Clav has authority to call that meeting and we will know the next day or so before Thursday when we're, if we're ready for approval on that. Just so everybody knows, we may not have a week off. But the meeting should be short and sweet. The, the other. Not the water thing, ignore the water thing.
No.
There's, there's a subdivision application that planning and zoning will have to consider. We, I got a comment from somebody that Joy Younger sent the City of Martin Dell recommendation to support a wastewater permit quality of five-five-two zero-point-five within the Martin Dell's jurisdiction, advocate for the same A development that could potentially affect what the San Marcos River. Yeah, we are receipt of that.
He's on, he's on the board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but the, about phase one improvements. Let's just write that down. We, I, I don't have all the bids yet, but I, I would like to have that at least on, on there for the future. Phase one.
Yeah. In case it comes in.
And. Doesn't have to be next time.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn at nine. I make a motion that we adjourn at nine thirty-three. Nine oh one.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
So where do you want us to put all these agendas that aren't getting used and paid for?
We, um, we grind them.
It's just leaving here?
We'll take some of the minute.